Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting Tuesday, August 6, 2024. It's 7:00 p.m. Right now it's actually 7:05. Because one of our members is participating remotely, the rules are a little bit different, so indulge me for a moment while I read some legal speak. In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extend the Governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. Seeing a quorum of the board present in person, I call to order the meeting. Also, we have a member, Lou Gito, who's participating remotely. I'd just like to take a roll call just to make sure that we're able to hear Mr. Gito, but also, so we'll start with actually Mr. Gito. Are you present?
I am present.
Thank you very much. We're able to hear you quite well now. Ms. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Carrera, Vice Chair Carrera?
Here.
And Mr. McRuskey?
I'm here.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. So our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flagpole in the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. First order of business, our Select Board comments. I'm going to start with, I guess we'll probably start over here on the right, with Vice Chair Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a tough thing to do. Nobody should have to do this. We lost a member of the Board of Selectmen, not this present Board, but a member who was a four-year member named David Joseph Spanky Souza, as most of us know him. He died suddenly and unexpectedly. He was the loving husband of Maria Rizende Souza for 33 years. He has a son, Antonio AJ, and he has a daughter named Holly. Spanky was all about our town. He was a lifelong resident. He graduated class of 85. And he was a truck driver for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for 14 years, and he was a foreman out of District 5 in Bridgewater. He was an active Board of Selectmen member. He was also a chairman of the Board in this town. Spanky was colorful, got his point across. He took it seriously, but he gave his time to many other numerous vocations where he ran parades for us. He was part of the Events Committee. He authored the Holiday of Lights Parade. And he loved to be Santa, after Joe was Santa. And I know a lot of people in town enjoyed to have him come by and their children see that. There isn't anything more that you can say. If you saw his send-off, it pretty much said it all. And from the Board of Selectmen to his wife, his children, and his friends and family, we wish the best for them in their time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrera. Next, Mr. McRuskey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's unfortunate that we have had in the month of July so many deaths. Too many to read altogether, five and a half pages, and they've been summarized. But we also have longtime Stoughton resident, 84 years old, and people will know firefighter Leo McGowan. Leo passed away after a struggle that he's had for a couple of years and passed away on August 1st, surrounded by his loving family, supported by his fellow and retired firefighters and lifelong friends. Leo was the husband of Joanne Smith McGowan for 59 years, son of the late Joseph and Helen Boute McGowan, and he was a Specialist 4th Class in the U.S. Army and a veteran of Vietnam era. Resident of Stoughton for 65 years, Leo was a firefighter with the Stoughton Fire Department for 29 years until he retired in 1997. He also owned, as many people know, his own oil company, L&amp;J Oil in Stoughton, for 25 years. He was a member of the Stoughton Fire Department Union and enjoyed spending time in his pool, working in his yard, birdwatching, fishing, and traveling, especially on vacations in New Hampshire, Bermuda. His greatest joy is spending time with his family, especially his grandchildren. In addition to his wife, Leo survives by his sons, Colonel Dennis McGowan, retired Army, and his wife, Chris, of San Antonio, Texas, Brian J. McGowan and his wife, Alicia, of Rentham, Daniel J. McGowan of the Stoughton PD, and his wife, Chrissy, of Stoughton, as well as grandchildren Sarah, Sean, Elijah, and Megan, Mara, and Caitlin. And he was the brother of Elaine Witchland of Rentham and Diane Brown of Walpole. Like previously mentioned with Spanky Souza, Leo was a guy around town. Anybody who didn't know Leo missed a great opportunity to see a guy who, when you hear that, people say, always had a smile on his face. He was always laughing. You know, he was having so much in life. But a great servant to the people of Stoughton. He was one of the people that trailblazed the EMT intermediates and EMTIs and all that was leading up to the paramedics. So on behalf of the people of Stoughton, I would honor Leo with a moment of silence and ask that you please join us. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to also just add these names into the record. I will have this for the secretary so it can be posted with the minutes. But we also had the passings of Stoughton residents Raymond Anderson, Madgery Hayes Gallagher-Monahan, Paul Binns, Joan Berba, Noreen Hardeman, Richard Corbett, Ruth Julian, Ralph Celito, Evelyn Ginsburg, Ronald Parsons, Raymond Ing, Noberta Ambrosio, Catherine Tumi Johnson, and Janet Bean. I ask that these be accepted into the record and included with the minutes once posted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have two comments for this evening. It's imperative that municipalities be concerned about the health and welfare of the growing senior population. Beyond providing a senior center for social health, senior citizens should be informed of services available to them, like visiting nurses. I want to remind citizens of some of the services Stoughton already provides. The Stoughton Public Health Association, commonly called Stoughton VNA, Visiting Nurse Association, offers a variety of services, like nursing, physical speech and occupational therapy, home health aides, medical social worker. Stoughton VNA is a gem. Patients love them. That's one. The second is, today I received in the mail a letter from our town manager, Mr. Coulter, and it was an invitation to a working group. And it says, "Greetings. The South School Building Project Independent Working Group consists of citizens and town employees appointed by the town manager. The purpose of the working group is to research the issues and questions surrounding the South School Building Project. The working group members have demonstrated their ability and willingness to be objective. Proposed members have voted for and against the school building project. This balance brings credibility. During a 10-week period, the group will meet once a week to take testimony from subject matter experts. By November 15, 2024, the working group will publish a document which will provide vetted information on the issues of known interest to residents. The document will provide information but will not take a for or against position on the project. This is the role of the PACs. During the working group meetings, members will take and challenge testimony, fact-check information, collect supporting documents, and review draft summaries on issues. Each of the members will be expected to execute the final document demonstrating their support of the data included in the report. This approach to a significant project is common. However, it may be new to Stoughton residents. The primary objective is to provide our residents with unbiased, accurate, and verifiable information on which residents are able to make an informed decision. I am writing to you today to ask if you are willing to be a part of this working group. I will be happy to answer your questions at that time. If you would like to reach out to me, my cellphone number, and he provides his cellphone, and it says, "Regards, Tom Coulter," town manager." There are about, there are a total of 18 residents and staff that were invited to be a part of this working group. I plan to accept this invitation, and I hope the others do too. Looking forward to it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and my fellow Board members.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Gito, do you have any comments for tonight?
No.
Thank you. I also don't have any comments, so we'll move on to our town manager comments. Our current acting town manager is Trish. We all know her well and appreciate her hard work she's done, so thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Coulter and Mr. Tisdale are both on vacation. Can you guys hear me? I have three announcements. We're pleased to notify you that the town of Stoughton has been approved for Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, MVP, Program Action Grant Award in the amount of $312,982 for the project titled "Stoughton Wide Culvert Assessment." The money will be broken up into two fiscal years, fiscal '25, $97,722, and fiscal year '26, $215,260. This builds upon a previous grant from two years ago that the town received for a townwide flooding study for $218,000. We would like to thank Craig Horstfall and Mark Tisdale, our town engineers, for their hard work and efforts landing this grant. This project will take approximately two years to complete and will help build a better townwide capital plan. That's the first announcement. Another announcement of good news is for the police department. Chief Donna McNamara is pleased to share that the Stoughton Police Department received a $249,425 grant from the Healy-Driscoll administration as part of the fiscal year '25 Body-Worn Cameras. They call it BWC Grant Program. The Healy-Driscoll administration awarded more than $3 million in grant funds to 32 local police departments to implement or expand body-worn camera programs. The BWC Grant Program supports municipal police departments in planning and implementing a new BWC program or expanding an existing BWC program to improve officer and community safety. Wearing body cameras demonstrates departments' commitments to transparency and accountability and helps improve police practices so that officers may better serve their communities. Research done by the Bureau of Justice Assistance suggests that implementing BWCs has led to reductions in crime, police-generated incidents, assaults against police officers, and complaints against police officers in certain communities. It is estimated that the grants will support more than 1,200 officers. "We are so grateful to receive funding for this program," said Chief McNamara. "Having the most updated technology possible is going to go a long way in providing our residents with a sense of security that they deserve." And then our last announcement is from Paula Newt. Paula Newt, the treasurer-collector, would like to remind taxpayers that the fiscal year '25 first-quarter real estate and personal property tax bills were due August 1st. If you mailed your check and do not see that the check is cleared in your bank account, please contact the collector's office to make sure a payment was received. All unpaid first-quarter tax balances are subject to an interest at a rate of 14% from the first quarter's due date. Real estate and personal property tax bills may be paid online at stoughton.org. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next order of business is citizens' comments. I know we have a number of people here. I just want to show of hands how many people would like to speak? Okay, thank you very much. So I just, people are not aware about it, the rules around citizens' comments have become a little bit more complex. About a year ago, there was a decision by a Superior Court that a lot of people who have citizens' comments have to take into consideration. For that purpose, I'm going to read a brief statement, just kind of set the guardrails as best I can and provide people with some basic idea of what we have to do here. So it says, "Before we begin citizens' comments, I'd like to remind everyone of or state some ground rules for this agenda item, which I, as the chair, would like to just voice as a preface before we begin. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for the Board to hear from the public but shouldn't be a dialogue or debate. I therefore encourage the Board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those you want to follow up on and/or that warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put it on an agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comments, sorry, if the comment doesn't require Board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I would recommend, sorry, request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker and then move on to the Board's business." I'll try to give everyone all the time they need, but we do have a full agenda, as we always do. So I will ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. While public comments are not required pertaining to an agenda item, such comments must pertain to a matter within the public body's jurisdiction. Public comments on matters outside of this public body's jurisdiction shall not be permitted. The following comments shall likewise not be permitted: threats, incitements to imminent lawless conduct, obscenities, personal attacks, defamatory statements, and sexually explicit statements. I encourage speakers to present their remarks in a respectful manner and refrain from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of members of the town boards, of town staff, the citizens of this community, and each other. Thank you. Let's proceed with the first speaker. I remind you, you have three minutes. So I'm going to, I'll sort of watch to this to make sure that everyone's treated with the same level of fairness. So we'll start with Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. This pertains to what we've already heard. If it's the same Ronald Parsons I graduated from high school with, I haven't seen him since then, so for me, he'll always be the 17-year-old in my yearbook. A handsome devil. Leo McGowan, I didn't know him very well as a firefighter. I knew him after his retirement. And whenever you spoke to Leo, he just told you straight out what he thought, no matter what you, he perceived your feelings were. He was just very honest and upright and devoted to his family. I was David Souza's fifth-grade teacher. He didn't become Spanky until middle school. During the blizzard of '78, my sister was trapped in Canton on Route 138. After three days, she decided to walk home, and Spanky's family ran the Stoughton diner. And during a crisis, it was open 24 hours so that people that had to be out in whatever could get warm and could get food. My sister went in there to get warm and to see if she could make a phone call, to call home to let us know that she was on her way. She was the only family member that wasn't with us, apart from my brother in Germany who missed the whole thing. Spanky recognized her as Ms. Walsh's sister and immediately took her to the phone. She called us to let us know she had another two miles to go, but she was on her way. The reason I'm telling this story is, there's been a lot said and written about what a caring person he was, but I want you to know, he was that way from the time he was young. He was a tribute to his parents, his father and his late mother. He cared from day one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. So the next, I see Mr. Ventrusco is nearby. Remember to hit the button, and your three-minute starts now.
Hi, Peter Ventrusco, 587 Canton Street. This list of people is going to be on this, nonpartisan. Everybody's going to be kind of neutral here. As far as the school goes, I would like a list of names because by looking at the list of names, I think most people that are involved in politics, like most of us are here, they're going to know who the no and the yes vote, and I think it's going to be stacked with yes people. And then when this is all done, I think it's a charade because it goes back to the same building committee, so nothing's going to change. So it's a big waste of time. And the people of Stoughton already spoke. They said no. Why is they going to bring this up and let this, when this town already said no? So why bring it back again? It's okay, they keep saying they get more voters, they're going to get more voters out, but they're going to lose by a bigger margin. So I don't know why, when it comes in front of your Board to send it to town meeting, I hope you just deny it, or there might be some political consequences. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your comments. Next.
One more thing I forgot to say. I am not for new schools. I am for schools, but if you build a $50 million school or $150 million school, the quality of education doesn't change. So build a cheaper school and still have the same quality. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Please join us, Ms. Lyons.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. So as a citizen of this town, I would like to bring up to the Select Board, as the Select Board who makes the policies of this town, to request making a policy on our free cash to get the free cash down to zero for use in the operating budget. I was a member of a committee who tried to get that passed. As a taxpayer and as a representative of taxpayers, we expect our policymakers to ensure a fiscally prudent budget. So I'm looking you in the eye tonight and on behalf of every taxpayer in this town to be cognizant of that as you, and I'm outright asking you, to put that in place for this upcoming fiscal year. I also, in light of Ms. Roberts' announcement, would like to indicate that we also need to respect the voters of this town. And I agree with the previous speaker, there has to be consequences. Elections matter and the votes matter. And I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I saw one other hand, but tell me if I'm wrong. Anybody else who's looking to speak? Oh, sorry, I know, I'm sorry, Dolores, is it Dolores? My eyes are, I need glasses. Dolores, are you able to hear us?
I can now hear, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else who's interested in speaking, I, sorry, there was actually one thing I wanted to mention, so I apologize. This should be wrong during the Select Board comments, but we have just a moment here. Jill has forwarded, sent me a message, this is actually something that was on Facebook. There's a resident who had issues with their water, and I think this happened pretty late at night, if I'm not mistaken, it was late at night. And they reached out to the police, they reached out to, they were transferred to fire, fire transferred them to the DPW. It was a sort of a team effort to make sure they had the right people going out to help this resident with, I think it was water, the meter was leaking, I guess into their house. And he just, he really wanted to express, and he did this in a Facebook post, his gratitude for the work that they did. And specifically mentions that, I think what sums it up, while I was so worried was when they said, "We're not leaving until you have water." And I think that's really telling of the quality of the workers in that department and the dedication they have to the citizens of the town. Specifically, the people who were out there were Derek Summers, Keith Musto, and Arthur Koala. And for that, one of our residents, one of our neighbors is grateful. I'm also very grateful for the work they do in all hours of day and night. Okay, so the next item of business is swearing in. We have our chief here. I think we have a couple of people to be introduced to, and some folks we missed an opportunity earlier to meet, so.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to introduce some of our new officers, but two new officers and one promotion to the rank of sergeant. So I thank you to the members of the Board and to the citizens that are here in the audience and members of the Stoughton Police Department that are also here to support their coworkers. Tonight, we are going to swear in as a ceremonial swearing-in for the promotion of Ryan Flanagan to the rank of sergeant from patrol officer. Sergeant Flanagan was initially appointed June 18 of this year, 2024, but tonight is the ceremonial introduction to the community and to the Select Board of Ryan Flanagan for the second time. He was hired in 2016, the end of 2016, graduated the academy in 2017 from the Boston Police Academy as a police officer. Ryan's taken on the responsibility that's entrusted to him with the well-being of fellow officers that are his subordinates that he will supervise as well as the Stoughton community. During his career as a police officer, Ryan has shown great character, integrity, high work ethic, and a strong commitment to the Stoughton Police Department and to our community. He began his career in 2017, as I said, when he graduated the Boston Police Academy, and he has been someone who has given everything he has to this department and to the community as a whole. Comes to work with a good, positive attitude every day, has great morale, and is appreciated by his coworkers. He's also a field training officer as a patrol officer. He's trained newer officers coming onto our department, imparts his knowledge and his training and his skills onto the newer members of our department, which has been incredible for them to learn from their veteran officer. During that 12 weeks, he imparts all that he knows onto the new officers, which gives them the basis and the foundation for their career moving forward. which it gives them the basis and the, and the foundation for their career moving forward. And we'll see two new officers that are going, going through that process right now. As an officer, Sergeant Flanagan received two merits, letters of merit and two meritorious unit accommodation awards for his actions during his career. He is also recognized by the Food Pantry Foundation of the Town of Stoughton for his self-initiated campaign in the department to raise money. Sergeant Flanagan came to me a number of years ago wanting to grow a beard. Self-serving a little bit, but there were some people in our office, in our department that also wanted to be able to grow facial hair. So he came to me with a proposal, which was they would raise money for a charity. And each year that they raised money for a charity, it was for a different cause. So sometimes it was for testicular cancer, food pantry, number of different causes. And it, it stuck and it wasn't that bad of an initiative. So we've allowed it to actually continue year-round and they don't have to pay anymore. So the charities may suffer a little bit, but it was a great cause and it actually worked out. And he proved to me that it was a worthwhile cause to, to change the policy for the department. So to his credit, as you can see, he's still wearing his beard today. Sergeant Flanagan is also, yeah, I think there's a number of members of the department that are happy that, that initiative has changed. He's also became a new firearms instructor for our department and gives back to, to his fellow officers with that instruction. And is very important for our department. He's taken on numerous, taken numerous leadership and supervisory courses leading up to his preparation for this new role. And he is in the latter stages of his own field training at the supervisory level right now and soon enough will be assigned to his own shift, which more than likely will be the midnight shift. And the midnight shift will welcome him with open eyes. So if interim clerk will administer the oath of office, we'll do that first.
And the Stoughton Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Ryan Flanagan.
Hereby accept.
Hereby accept.
The position of Police Sergeant for the Town of Stoughton.
The position of Police Sergeant for the Town of Stoughton.
Pinning Sergeant Flanagan is his fiancee. All right, for our next two swearing in this evening, we'll be swearing in Officer Lamb and Officer General. Officer Lamb was officially sworn in May twenty-third after completing the fifty-first MBTA Academy. His, his fellow classmates in that academy were introduced to the Select Board a few weeks back, but he was committed to his annual military training and was not able to be here that, on that evening. And Officer General is our second patrol officer that, to be introduced tonight. He recently graduated from the Plymouth Police Academy on July twenty-fourth and was officially sworn in on, on July twenty-fifth. Both officers are embarking on their new beginning of their career, which began approximately a year and a half ago. Both officers began a journey to this career in policing when they attended their orientation at our police department, where they had to go through a fifty-page orientation. And during that orientation, they were, eyes were opened to the beginnings of the long, in-depth background investigation that we do for every candidate in order for them to become a member of the Stoughton Police Department. That enduring process and the tasks they fully committed to and completed and that process led to them becoming, getting conditional offers and becoming members of their respective police academies. They had to go through the background of medical, physical, psychological evaluation. The final test was the fitness test in order to get into the academy. Both officers successfully completed that and they entered their twenty-six week Police Academy program, during which they studied numerous subjects, which would be applicable to our careers and criminal law, constitutional law, juvenile law, domestic violence, communication skills, community policing, de-escalation, firearms training, defensive tactics, fun stuff, driving school, EVOC class. All of that culminating in their success to graduate their academy and come in and be introduced to our community as newest members of our department. As they embark on their careers as police officers, I'd like to acknowledge the sacrifices and hard work and dedication to becoming a police officer that they both have already made to those first steps and the foundation that they have built for our department and our, our town. Officer, Officer Lamb was born in Vietnam and raised there until he was sixteen years old, when he became, when he came to America as an exchange student living in Texas for three years before finally moving and landing in Massachusetts. He joined the U.S. Army in 2014 and was deployed in 2016. He transferred over to the Mass Army National Guard as a reserve, where he continues to serve. Officer Lamb became a corrections officer in 2020 with the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office before he was hired by our department. Again, attended the MBTA Police Academy and successfully completed that in May. And he's in the process, in the middle of his twelve-week field training program as we speak. Officer Robert General, born and raised here in Stoughton, graduated from Wilfork Aggie in 2020. After high school, Officer General obtained a Class A driver's license and was hired by this town and our DPW when he initially began a career for the Town of Stoughton and serving the Town of Stoughton. During his background investigation, Officer General's, every supervisor that we spoke to with regards to his background, whether it was for the Town of Stoughton or other employment that he had, they all said they would hate to see him go. He was a hard worker, he reported to work with a positive attitude, was a team player and always willing to learn something in order to get the job done. And more importantly, they would hate to see him leave. And that's something that I, as a boss, I, obviously, we all want employees like that, that you, a supervisor is going to hate to see them go. Officer General dedicated himself to getting into the academy. He had, had some bumps in the road, gave extra dedication to getting into the academy. And after successfully completing the Plymouth Academy, we have him here now in Stoughton in order to serve the Town of Stoughton. And we invite the interim town clerk to swear, both officers in.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Now, I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent.
Upon me as a police officer.
Upon me as a police officer.
For the Town of Stoughton, Massachusetts.
For the Town of Stoughton, Massachusetts.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And will uphold and defend the Constitution.
And will uphold and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I will obey and be bound by such rules.
I will obey and be bound by such rules.
And regulations as are now.
And regulations as are now.
Or may be established by the Town of Stoughton and its Police Department.
Or may be established by the Town of Stoughton or the Police Department.
I.
I, Robert General.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will never betray my badge.
That I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the Constitution.
I will uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the Stoughton Police Department.
And the Stoughton Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Robert General.
Hereby accept.
Hereby accept.
The position of Police Officer for the Town of Stoughton.
Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, would you like five minutes to do some pictures and anything like that?
Certainly, that would be great.
Okay, five-minute recess and, and we'll be back. Thank you. Working way into the hallways. We're going to continue on the meeting here. So the next order of business is, this is, I'm not sure if I'm spotting her. Is she here or maybe online? Oh, she's here. Okay, so we have to establish special account for public, no, sorry. I'm, I'm jumping ahead, I apologize. So the next one up is actually Brian McCrisky. This is to establish special account for public safety wellness program donations. Votes may be taken. Welcome, thank you very much. I know this is a relatively new program and, and you're, you're inaugurating it for, for, for the Town of Stoughton. So we're all excited to hear what you've been working on and what's going on and what you guys are looking to do with this account. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's time.
Please pull the mic. Pretty close, yeah, yeah, I gave it pretty close.
Tell me when we're good.
Like.
Good, real close all around.
Within an inch or two.
I appreciate your time. I've prepared a letter that I've written to kind of speak on the wellness program and the importance for it, for our first responders, our cops and firefighters. And I have a very brief statement regarding the donation fund. I spoke with Mr. Kavy yesterday about the letter that I've written. So I'll start with that and I'm just going to read right off the paper with this, so. I'd like to start by thanking the Town of Stoughton and all the individuals involved for allowing me to speak to you all at this present day. Out of respect, I'd like to inform you, some of the things I have to talk about may be graphic. Some may be tough to hear, but my plan is to inform people about health and wellness for our first responders. I'm not here specifically to talk about myself, but in order for those who do not know me to understand who I am, where I come from, what I stand for, I will provide some background. I was born and raised in Stoughton on Winter Street. I attended the Gibbons School, Stoughton Middle School, Stoughton High School, and I graduated in 2010. Thirty-two years old today, I'm married to the love of my life, Victoria, and we share two gorgeous huskies together. I've worked as a military police officer for the Army National Guard. I've worked for the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office as a corrections officer. I have served as a patrolman for our Town of Stoughton at the Police Department. And I've served as a SWAT operator for the Metro Elect SWAT team. I've attended the United States Police Academy in Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, the Worcester Police Academy, Middlesex Sheriff's Academy and the Boston Police Academy. In total, that's seventy-six weeks of academy training I've received throughout my life, compared to the standard entry to be a police officer in Massachusetts, which is between twenty-two to twenty-six weeks. While a patrolman for the Town of Stoughton, I served as a field training officer, firearms instructor, less lethal weapon instructor, Taser instructor, ballistic shield instructor, a rifle armorer and a handgun armorer. I dedicated eleven years of my life to being a first responder and I am who I am today because of that. That is some of what I have accomplished in my professional career, but that is not all I am. I'm a lover of life, I'm a lover of nature. I strive to be happy daily and I desire to bring positivity into lives that people might not otherwise have noticed. Now, what you cannot see in me, just by looking at me today, is what the job of being a patrolman for the Town of Stoughton has shown me. It has shown me beauty in people, it has shown me awful atrocities. It has shown me the greatest successes and putting me in a tremendous amount of fear at times. These things make you humble, but they also create a different perspective, which I live through and the views I had on the world. I'd like to share with you what my time as a patrolman has shown me. It has shown me a dead body in the middle of the woods on a holiday before a dinner with my family. It's shown me the faces of family while I conduct CPR on the father that had been found unconscious on a holiday morning while everybody else is with their loved ones. It's shown me a murdered victim that I attempted to render medical aid and ultimately proved unsuccessful. It has shown me a father who took a razor blade to his forearm and cut it open like a piece of meat trying to kill himself. It has shown me a son that committed suicide and had to be cut down by our officers and firefighters because there was no ambulance access and had to be carried out by hand. I found a handwritten, I found a man sitting in a work van with an exhaust pipe taped to his window with a handwritten letter to his family on his front seat. I have seen lifeless children and helpless parents looking for me to fix it. I've had my sights of a firearm dialed into the chest of enough people, fully prepared to take human life. I have seen death to the point that it is meaningless to even think there is a God because why would he allow such awful things to happen to good people? I have seen human beings put harm on other people in such ways that you can never understand or comprehend unless you see it with your own eyes. I will say I did serve on SWAT, which provides different opportunities, different situations that many cops do not encounter due to the severe nature. But that is not the focus of anything I shared with you. That was just in the function of being a regular cop. I was a patrolman for a total of seven years. And I just want to remind some that don't know, full retirement comes at thirty-two years of service. This is what my job gave to me. Stoughton is my home, where I was raised, where I grew up. That is what my career as a police officer gave, gave to me to live with for the rest of my life. Yes, my job, what I did daily was not sitting at a computer in a safe controlled space, but being faced with life and death daily as a part of my job. Being a copper firefighter is not just a job. It's a calling for some and for others, it's absolute hell they see no escape from. On June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, I left two hours into my day shift and I never returned a shift. I quit my career in the profession that I dedicated the majority of my adult life to because I had had enough. I quit. I had to leave the people I stood side by side with for seven years, a family of blue and red. I had to do this in order to save who I was because I had lost so much of myself doing my job. I share these things with you to try and show you a glimpse of what being a first responder is like at times. As awful as the incidents are I just listed, I know there are members of the Stoughton Police Department and Stoughton Fire Department that have been through far much worse and far many, far more dangerous situations and they are still serving the Town of Stoughton as we sit here today. They haven't quit, they are still in the fight. Right now, as we sit here in a nice controlled environment, there are cops potentially in the most dangerous incident of their lives. There are firefighters potentially dealing with a fully working structure fire with occupants possibly inside. There are firefighters potentially dealing with a fully working structure fire with occupants possibly inside. People think they know the first responders' jobs by reading news articles, watching videos, or just assuming. People may say it's what they signed up for. For, I say to you, you have no idea what's saying, "That's what they signed up for"? It's ridiculous. We cannot speculate on how somebody feels with never knowing what they experience. People who are not first responders will never understand the stress and emotions of standing in a stranger's home after a significant other abuses their spouse and then potentially flees with a firearm is unaccounted for. Or what it feels like to be performing lifesaving medical aid when a family stands over you and expects you that you're going to save their loved one. The feeling of having to look in someone's eyes and tell them it's going to be okay when you know in reality things are so screwed up you can't comprehend it yourself. That's the daily struggle of some cops and firefighters in Stoughton that they can encounter daily. A study conducted in 2015 showed that the average number of critical incidents a first responder directly involved in is 188 incidents. For a 32-year career, that's an average of just under six per year. An additional study on the public concluded that a civilian will experience one to three critical incidents in their lifetime. A first responder may see more critical incidents in a four-to-six-month period than an average citizen does in their entire life. Numbers show that an average of 184 law enforcement officers can commit suicide each year along with an additional average number of 100 firefighters. In 2023, 138 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty. In 2022, 93 firefighters died in the line of duty. More cops and firefighters kill themselves than dying while working their jobs. What their jobs show them and what they may become is more likely to have somebody take their own life than to have the job do it for them. Suicide is preventable, and we need to show our first responders the appreciation they deserve. Our first responders need our support. This new program that the town of Stoughton has chosen to offer to its first responders is an opportunity to provide that help. We need to begin a proactive approach to make people better. For too long, we've waited until somebody gets jammed up or becomes too much, or now we have to deal with it because something happened. It needs to change. This cannot be a mandate. This cannot be forced upon people. This needs to be shown to the first responders of Stoughton, Massachusetts that the town supports the men and women they choose to employ. The goal of this program is to provide resources directly to all members of the Stoughton Police Department and Stoughton Fire Department. From the chiefs down to the newest hire, all members receive all resources. We need to take that proactive approach. I hope in doing so, someone will have access without having to raise their hand and ask for help. Just by logging into their email account, they'll have access to all sorts of resources. As for me being the public safety wellness coordinator, I am not a clinician. I am not a doctor. I do not hold a college degree. I'm a person who cares enough to try to help. As the town legal representation advised me, I am a resource facilitator. I'm in a position where I have a dedicated position to find resources and make contacts with people in specialized fields, in wellness practice positions, fitness and health industry, to bring results directly to our first responders. This program is not one that can be assessed by statistics. I can tell you that there are people who may want to raise their hand for help but will refuse to do so because they do not want to be considered another number or a statistic like they are on so many occasions. Using measures such as lower overtime, comp time, less sick time, complaints, internal investigations, or admin leave as a measure of success will not fully be able to represent the change this program could make in people's lives. This program is not going to be a resolution for all problems surrounding cops and firefighters. It is not going to stop or prevent all issues, but it is a start. We may have incidents occur or where something needs to be dealt with, but if we can provide support to one person, that is the goal. My question is, what is the value of one life to you? Is it a dollar amount? Is it an early retirement to get a problem out of the building? Is it less overtime, less sick time? And my answer is no. One life is invaluable. I can tell you as of today, if we are using the measurement of one, this program has already made a significant difference in this town. Cops and firefighters are unique, and I can confidently say this because I have been there and I lived it. Trust in first responders is a tough thing to earn because of what they see and hear daily. Some may say, "If you aren't one of us, you'll never be in our circle." Once this trust is broken, it can almost be impossible to repair. I believe I have the trust of many people at the police and fire department, and I swear to anyone listening to this, I will not jeopardize that trust I have earned from you. I am in this position because I was blessed with an opportunity to help the people I served with for seven years alongside after I decided to walk away from them, and I will have to live with that for the rest of my life. But what I can do moving forward is provide every ounce of my being to be available and present for any first responder who may feel like they are alone or at the end of their road and help them see the light that is so faint, so very faint for many cops and firefighters at times. This program is bigger than me. It is bigger than this town, and it is well-deserved by all the first responders currently serving citizens of Stoughton 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. I truly appreciate you listening to me, and that's all I have to say on the letter that I've prepared, so. I have a much shorter letter I prepared. This is specific to my presence for the donation fund. I appreciate you allowing me the time to share that letter that I had prepared. This is specific to the request from the select board to create a donation fund for the public safety wellness program for the town of Stoughton. I'm here today to request the creation of a donation fund for the public safety wellness program by the select board. The public safety wellness program is a new program created by Stoughton, and it is continually being developed to help Stoughton first responders in areas of overall health and wellness. The program takes a proactive approach of providing wellness resources before a time of need for a person instead of just being involved when they have an issue. At least once a week, new material is sent to each first responder, such as suicide prevention information, breathing practices, or even just best sleep practices. The program offers multiple opportunities for fitness activities each week to include running groups along with nature hikes in local parks. The program is designed to be easily accessible while providing a support when or if needed by a first responder. There have been some questions as to if this is a peer support unit. This is not a peer support unit. Peer support units are common in the first responder community, but they are typically used for critical incidents, time of personal crisis, or as a reactive measure after trauma. This is not, this program is not designed to replicate a peer support unit. This program's goal is to provide a proactive approach towards health and wellness. Taking steps, not always leaps, but steps towards a better life. Affording regular opportunities to learn new wellness practices, to get and stay physically active, or just to be present and provide any support for a Stoughton first responder, whether it may be a question or just wanting to talk to somebody. Since I have begun this position, I have spoken to the town's legal counsel on several occasions along with multiple meetings with the town's finance director about the projected plans for the public safety wellness program for the town of Stoughton. Both the council and finance director have advised me that a town allocated donation fund would be suitable for this program. Due to not having a budget for the public safety wellness program at this time, there are limits on the amount of engagement and opportunity that the program can afford to Stoughton's first responders. If this donation fund is to be approved by the select board, I plan to raise funds which will be able to be used solely for the public safety wellness program to continue to build a culture of health and wellness for our first responders, group activities to build camaraderie among the department members, an opportunity to better their own lives, and resources to help issues stemming from their careers as first responders. I respect your time and position on this, and as a select board, I request you please give me approval for a donation fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to go around the horn and see if anybody has any questions or comments they'd like to make. We'll start with Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a very good cause. I believe that there is a need for that account. But each account is affiliated with a department. So in this case, I see your human resource director is there. So is this an arm to human resources? Or where will this fit in the whole general ledger of accounting accounts?
Hi, Ms. Roberts. The health and wellness program will have a donation program, and with that, the health and wellness coordinator, Mr. McCrisky, he does fall under the guidance of human resources. With the donation program, it's a separate and total general ledger account number. The money is used only for those programs and can be used for nothing else.
Thank you. That completely answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm going to hop online to Mr. Gito. Do you have any comments or questions? Sorry, Mr. Gito, if you're speaking, you're some.
I just found my microphone.
No problem.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. McCrisky for his first letter as well as thank him for his request. I think that this is a very important program. I and many other people have talked about this for a long time. I'm 100% behind doing all we can to deal with issues, dealing with our first responders. It's an awful job. I would not want it. It can be a wonderful job as well, as Mr. McCrisky mentioned, but it's a hard job. And I thank him for taking on this challenge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I share Carrera. Do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one comment I want to pass on to Brian. Brian, thank you for your bravery to take this on. After hearing that letter, nobody should face stuff like that or even be able to take it on. But the caring that you have for the men and women in our first responder forces, I thank you, and I will vote for it.
Thank you. And Mr. McCrisky? You got it. Of course, of course. I apologize.
Brian, I just wanted to say thank you for putting yourself out there, for your passion. It's so evident what you do, and we really appreciate it. And I know everybody will appreciate this program. That was.
Thank you.
Very touching. Thank you for putting yourself out there.
I changed my mind. Believe me, I can. But it's very unique to sit here, as long as I've sat here over the years, and to watch my son sit here, and his mom Stephanie's out there as well, his wife. But Stephanie and I know him from a long time ago. And watched him excel as a young man, knew what he wanted to do, always straight away. And of all the years I've sat on this board, number one, never have I been brought to a tear. But to sit here and watch your son excel, make a tough decision, know that he is just, he has just sounded the alarm from the mountain. He's been heard, and we need to make sure that this message doesn't end. I've never been prouder to be your dad. I love you so much.
I also want to thank you for, you know, something that is very difficult to do besides telling your story. It's also, you know, more than anything, being honest. And, you know, it's something we all, maybe not all, a lot of us struggle with, is being honest about when things are too much. And we have this expectation that we should be able to be stronger, we should be able to fight through it. And it's, you know, some strange, you know, botanical, you know, notion that we've had to be invincible psychologically, even though we give people the best equipment to stay safe on their jobs. We make sure that they wear seatbelts. We make sure that, you know, police officers have bulletproof vests. We're stringing for cancer for firefighters. But their mental health, you know, that's, you're on your own. You know, that tends to be the case. And it just takes somebody to say it. Like, what are we doing here? You know, why are we not taking this as seriously? So, you know, I really genuinely appreciate what you're doing here, what you're trying to create, and that you are leveraging, you know, aspects of your own history to make this a really meaningful program. So I just want to thank you for all of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to establish the special account for public safety wellness program donations as presented by Brian McCrisky, the public safety wellness coordinator.
Second. Okay, so second and third, but we have a motion from Mr. McCrisky, a second from Debra Roberts. And because we have a remote participant, we'll have to take a roll call. So I'll start with Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you very much for moving this forward. Thank you. That was very moving, so thank you. The next order of business, this is, it was premature earlier, but this is our town accountant's request to authorize the operational assessment of DOR slash DHS on the treasurer collector's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As part of the job as the finance director town accountant, we are required to do operational assessments of different departments.
I apologize. Will you move the mic a little closer? My hearing's atrocious. Thank you.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. As part of the job as finance director town accountant, you are required to do operational assessments of various departments. And what I'm finding is I can do the assessment in my own department, but the treasurer collector's office could use some assessment. It is to help them eliminate things because the way they've always done it and to be able to bring them into a more managed, financial management system that we have. It should cut down on duplication of processes and make things a lot easier. Now, this is not something that we can just go out and request. This is a request by the board of selectmen. I have done this in other communities. We had financial management policies done in other communities, to other communities I was in, and we found those extremely helpful. The purpose of this is not to, and I want to be very, very clear, so there's no information being misconstrued. This is a tool to help the town to advance us to a better financial policies. And with that, I do have a letter that was written by the treasurer collector. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. She's on vacation, but this was not something that was done without speaking with her first, giving her the opportunity to say yes or no. So it was fully vetted with her, with the town manager, with myself, to decide whether or not this is the way we want it to go. The letter as written is to the board of selectmen dated August 2, 2024. The finance director and I have discussed having the Division of Local Services Financial Management Bureau perform an operational assessment for the treasurer collector's offices. I feel this would be beneficial for the two departments and the town. The operation assessment will provide guidance on how the departments can conform their daily tasks more efficiently. An operational assessment can only help the department with its daily operations. It certainly can hurt. Biz and I hope other departments will follow my example and participate in the operational assessment done by the Division of Local Services Financial Management Services Bureau. Any questions?
So just before I go around, I'll let everybody get a chance. I just want to say that I really appreciate and really love the fact that everyone is very much on board with this. This level of transparency is the job. This level of transparency is the job, and we can always find ways of improving. There's never any reason to not kick the doors open, allow people to take a look. And so I'm just grateful you're taking the lead on this. I'm really grateful that Paula Newt is 100% on board with it, and I'm not surprised. I think you are both excellent at your jobs, and I appreciate the work you do. But I just wanna express my gratitude. But I'll start with Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does this mic work? Sometimes this goes in and out. I don't know what's going on. Hi, Elizabeth. It's no doubt in my mind that you have the skills to do the assessment. So I want you to understand that I'm coming from a point of being an auditor. So when I think about an assessment, I equate being an assessment as being an audit. I've always learned through the years that there is a conflict from auditing finance, financial people auditing a treasurer's office. We talked about this area reporting into you, the auditing. Let's just call it, that's Mary Jane. Mary Jane reporting into you, and she is the internal auditor. And at the end of the day, in a lot of discussion, we decided that, and we recommended, and Mr. Coulter agreed, that that auditor position would report to him. So with that said, I still have that same kinda ugh kinda in my belly that says, there is a conflict that the finance area is assessing slash auditing the treasurer. I think I would feel, and actually I know, I would feel a little more comfortable if it was the auditor during the assessment, even if it was an external auditor or external person with that same skill set. So you're perfect to do it, but I just think because of the close ties. So please help put my mind to ease on that. I don't know if you can, but I-
I'm sure I can put your mind to ease.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you very much.
What it is, is we're doing it, we're having the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services at the state level, come in and do an independent assessment. They are not hired by the town. They're strictly independent. They come in and they look at different things that are going on. To have an internal auditor within the town make this type of assessment, in my opinion, is not fair. It needs to be somebody totally independent with no thought or preconception in the game. We do not pay the Department of Revenue for this service. It's a free service. And they have multiple reports online where they have done operational assessments in other communities. And they have been very successful, where it helps you to determine, well, this is a way to change your procedures, do your policies, things like that. Sometimes you get bogged down in day-to-day operations, and this will certainly help. The Treasurer Collector's Department is extremely important, and I trust that department completely. I trust the department head. I would never question her integrity or anything else. But to be able to help her streamline the operations, that's the point of the operational assessment.
Can I, as a piggyback to your statement, I'm very clear except for one piece. So we have the DOR that will come in and perform the assessment. Okay, so I was clear from that initially. So Elizabeth, what would you, your role would be, and I need the clarification on that, is that the oversight? Because we need someone to verify what they're looking at and gather this information. And I know Paula is the one that's being audited. So who are the players in this whole? What are the roles and who are the people that will be involved in this to keep it fair and equitable?
Fair and equitable would be the Treasurer Collector's Office, representatives from the Department of Revenue, and the Finance Director Accounting Office. We would all get together and say, okay, these are the issues that we all see. How can we fix them? And the Department of Revenue is the one who's gonna be making the report. There's very little input that's gonna be coming from the Finance Director, because we want to see, what does the DOR recommend? How can we streamline our operations? And that's the most important part, is that it be independent and that the influence from any other department head is slim to none. And they will be asking questions of the department, the employees within the department. They'll be asking questions of Paula, the Treasurer Collector. What are you doing? What are you not doing? What can we do to help you? Maybe if you eliminate this step that you've been doing. And part of the issue is not just, it is throughout the organization. What I frequently hear is, that's the way it's always been done. And the way it's always been done goes back to the 1990s, early 2000s. So the best way to get an operational assessment is to have someone who does this every single day. And in the end, the Treasurer Collector's Office Town Accountant, we are all responsible to the Department of Revenue. So if we ensure that we're doing things in accordance with the laws and how we can do things appropriately, that would be my recommendation.
So what is your role, Elizabeth, in this?
My role is coming to the Board of Selectmen, requesting your permission to have them come in, discussing the situation prior to, reading the reports from other communities and how they were set up, and being able to help the Treasurer Collector work through the issues that they're having as far as getting things done in appropriate time. The DOR may come back and say, you know, we did an assessment, and we think they need more help. Or the DOR could come back and say, there's a lot of redundancies here, so why don't we eliminate some of these? But when you're working day-to-day to try and get some of these things done, you don't necessarily see the redundancies. So my role would be limited, because it has to be independent. If I am heavily involved, it will be a conflict, and I personally cannot do that.
Thank you. That's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Long way around.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gito, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. I have some of the same concerns that this Ms. Roberts mentioned earlier. It would seem to me that the DOR report should be for the town manager and to bring in the Treasurer Collector and the Finance Director's views on issues. And the working out of the things that need to be worked out should be worked out after the report is presented. And not that the issues couldn't be addressed during that study and a number of the things brought up. But I would like to see the person receiving the report being the town manager. That's my view.
The report is prepared for the town. It's being requested by the Select Board. So in essence, it would be the Select Board who would be getting the report.
I haven't changed my view on that.
Thank you. Do you have any other, sorry, yes.
I'm sure that Tom will definitely wanna see the report. So I will note, Mr. Gito, your comments as a follow-up when he gets back from vacation, just so he's aware of that comment.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Gito? Okay. Thank you very much. And Mr. Carrera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree wholeheartedly with Elizabeth that it has to be DOR. They'll go through it. They'll put the, I've gone through this before. And they'll put together what they think needs to be outlined or outsourced. Sometimes you don't have to hire more people and create more weight. You can outsource. So that's another option, because I've heard that from them before, that it can be done, and it's cheaper. So I think the report has to come to us first, and then, Mr. Coulter, at the same time, will listen to some of our concerns of what we get out of it. And I'm not just gonna hand something over, and we don't see what's going on. They're the ones asked, you know, putting our name to it at her request. So that's where I stand.
Mr. McCrisky?
Very short. I was gonna say almost the same thing Scott said. It comes here, and it's good. I mean, it goes down through the hierarchy. Highest executive authority is the Select Board. We hire a town manager. It's great. Gets everybody in on this. Good information. Biz, thank you for what you've been doing since you've been here. We're doing things that we haven't done before, you know, and that's a good thing. When we're challenging ourselves, that's never a bad thing. So this is awesome. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate my original thanks for this, gratitude, that I think this is a wonderful approach to take. I think the transparency in it and reaching out to a body that not only do we interact with through the regulations and through statute, we also, they will have a lot of experience with other towns and other communities, other methods. They will know best practices. They'll see where the pitfalls are, and if they're willing to voluntarily show us, you know, where our weaknesses are, then that is, you know, wonderful service for them to provide. And it's, 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 it would be silly for us not to exercise the request. So I thank you very much for doing that. I've got no questions about it. I will entertain a motion to approve this request to authorize the operating assessment of the, at DOR and DHS on the Treasurer Collector's Office.
So made.
Second.
Okay, made by Ms. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. And we will take a roll call vote on this. Mr. Gito?
I will vote in favor of this. The report has to occur with the reservations that I mentioned before.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Roberts?
A friendly amendment? A friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor. And that is that the report will be delivered, it's within our jurisdiction, but the report will be delivered to the Select Board and the Town Manager.
That works. So we've had this motion, it was seconded by, the original motion was seconded by Mr. Carrera. Do you accept the friendly amendment to it?
Yes.
Okay, he said yes, so that amendment has been made. I'm gonna start over again, just because I wanna make sure that Mr. Gito's vote on the current amendment, current motion is recorded. Mr. Gito, how do you vote on the amended motion?
In the same manner that I did before.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky? I vote yes as well. Thank you very much. I know that your name shows up later on the agenda. Don't stick around for that. That's just the authorizing the signature, so.
Point of information?
Yes, of course.
We will be in the queue effective tomorrow. And currently, our team will be out here midwinter. So it does take time, because they do assessments for multiple communities. So as soon as we start the process, you'll be notified. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Okay. Next order of business are public hearings. I know we're running a little bit behind, but I think we had a couple of things there that required a little bit longer than expected.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For item number 11, just in case we have questions of Ms. Zalinski, is she leaving now or will she be here?
Yeah, no, it's not necessary. This is for the warrants that we sign to pay bills. Yeah, it's, it's just to keep, one of us has to do it. And I've been doing it. I think you're the second, and we're just gonna have to choose somebody else. So she's not gonna be necessary to explain it. Okay, so the public hearings, as is our practice during this current term, our Vice Chair, Vice Chair Carrera, is in charge of all public hearings. For anybody who's making comments, direct them to him and through him. He is effectively the acting chair during this process. So thank you very much, Vice Chair Carrera. You never know. Things can go wild. Ready, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on August 6th, 2024, at 8:00 p.m. to consider the application of Sugarloaf Hospitality LLC DBA TGI Fridays, located at Number 2 Harzway Stoughton, Mass. 02072, for the change of ownership from TGA Fridays, Inc. to Sugarloaf Hospitality LLC and for the change of manager from Derwin Tucker to Thomas J. Wright, Jr. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, 3rd floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. And are virtually in vehicle via Google Meets and the broadcast via Stoughton Media, Access Television and Livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. May I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Yes. Debra?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And the chairman, yes. So we are now open. Bear with me one second. I'm gonna read some stuff in, then we'll let you speak, all right? Thank you. We have the info from our town departments. We have the advertisement that was paid for. We have a serve-safe alcohol certificate in Thomas Wright's name, 21424. There was a CORE request done. We have, from the Stoughton Fire Department, Assistant Chief Jackson May Comba has approved it. From Chief Donna McNamara, we have an approval from the chief. On the change of ownership from Board of Health, Sean Leahy has an approval of that. And it says has a quarterly pumping contract for your grease traps. That's true. Thank you, sir. The Building Department, Mr. Jack Erickson, is an approval. Teresa Cardoza from Treasurer Collector's Office, there's no outstanding, and there's an approval there. Karen Brown, Water Department Representative, is an approval too. We have a business contact information with the information for the people that we need to get to. And there was the proper Alcohol Beverage Commission information was all filled out, and that's proper. So over to you, sir. Give you a name for the record. Pull that mic close and press it so it becomes green. There you go.
Thomas Wright?
You can let go of it now. There you go. Just pull it to a close. Thank you.
If I may, Ms. Carrera? If I may, Ms. Carrera, I'm not sure if you can hear me?
Yep.
My name is Al DiNapoli. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and with me virtually, and sorry to be being virtual, but I also have Ray Blanchett, who is virtual. He is the sole manager and member of the applicant Sugarloaf Hospitality LLC. It's good to be back in Stoughton. Before I became a lawyer, I taught 7th grade English for six years at what is now the O'Donnell Middle School under Bob O'Donnell, who is a great man. And it's nice to be in Stoughton and sitting here listening to the fine work you are doing over there. What we have here is an application for a transfer of the liquor license from TGI Fridays, which has operated in the town for a number of years, to Sugarloaf Hospitality LLC. This is a multi-unit transfer. It involves six different units in Massachusetts and a number in New Hampshire. Because it was a multi-unit transfer, there was a template sent up to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission before we filed our applications with each municipality, and the ABCC approved the transfer subject to the municipality's approval. Boston, Braintree, Milbury, Everett, and Methuen have already approved the other five transfers from TGI Fridays to Sugarloaf Hospitality. This transfer is part of a severance between TGI Fridays and Mr. Blanchett, who was a principal at TGI Fridays for a number of years, and he's here to answer any questions. He's virtual. He's suffering with a little summer cold, so they didn't want to come in and infect everyone, and he's here to answer any questions. And also, you've already been introduced to Tom Wright. Tom Wright is the applicant-to-be manager of record. Tom has an interest in history. He's worked 18 years with TGI Fridays, so he knows the, you know, the operations of TGI Fridays. So this is going to be a franchise, and as I said, there were five locations in Massachusetts that were transferred, and are going to be operated as a franchise together with this one, pending approval under the ownership of Sugarloaf Hospitality.
Thank you, Attorney DiNapoli. I didn't realize that you were online. I apologize.
No problem whatsoever.
Do you have anything you would like to say, sir?
I do not.
Mr. Blanchett, do you have anything you want to add, sir?
No, I wouldn't say it this time, other than, you know, we really appreciate the Board taking the time to consider this. I've been associated with TGI Fridays actually since 1989, if you can believe that. Started as a manager in training in Philly, and my last assignment, I was the CEO of the company for the last several years. I'm very committed to the brand, and most importantly, in New England and there in Stoughton, Mass. That's a very important business to us. It gets my personal attention, and you have my word that we will do our very best to be great citizens in Stoughton and run a business that you can be proud of.
Thank you. Is there any questions of the Board?
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one question, and it was, I think, confusing language for me. On the Business Entity Summary page, under entity type, it has foreign limited liability company. On the Office of the Secretary of State Certificate of Fact, it is listing a domestic limited liability company. Now, of course, I can Google what the difference is between a foreign limited liability and a domestic, but is that material in this case? Can you explain to me why on one document it describes the entity one way and on another using a different language? I think that would be helpful for me.
I'm sorry, but I can't say I can. I think it's just a typo. I think the LLC is actually a domestic LLC, and I'm not sure why foreign was put in there.
That's correct. It's a domestic LLC, sole member.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Sorry for any confusion.
That's all quite all right.
Mr. Gito, do you have anything you would like to add, sir?
No.
No. Mr. McCrisky?
I don't think so.
Mr. Chairman?
I've got no questions. It's pretty straightforward. I appreciate the applicants coming forward and bringing business and continuing business in Stoughton, so I appreciate the business. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go out to the, I'll go out to the audience. Ms. Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. This location is very popular with younger members of my family. Are they going to notice any difference, or is it pretty much the same?
I can handle that. It should be identical. We are still part of the TGI Fridays brand, so we're franchisees of the brand, which requires us to maintain the same high standards of food service. I'd like to believe that because now we're locally owned and operated, that we're going to be a little better and a little more committed to the community and endearing ourselves because we know that that really is the formula for success long-term. But yeah, it's still a TGI Fridays and governed by them but driven by us.
Thank you. I have no objections.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. That's, I was just going back and forth over the application, and no real questions, just the Mr. Blanchett's role, and I didn't see it here, but I've been going back and forth on contact information. So what is the chain of command? Now, we have the manager, Mr. Wright, as the manager of the location. We have the attorney, and Mr. Blanchett was identified as a part of the TGI's hierarchy. Sir, are you a part of the new entity, the franchisee?
Yes, sir. I'm the 100% owner. The only difference is that Tom, who's sitting in front of you, is a partner. I believe in having, you know, managing partners in the business, so they're more committed to the local community. He reports directly to me. I'm the CEO of Sugarloaf, and very involved. I'm in Stoughton probably a couple of times a month, to be honest with you. I know the team members down there, and spend quite a bit of time in the restaurant. So it's one that we're really excited about because we believe that Stoughton has unique potential, and, but yeah, I'm involved. I own it and am responsible for it, but have a great partner in Tom, who's sitting in front of you, that's there on a day-to-day basis. Did that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. I just, I didn't see the name anywhere on any of the paperwork here, and I was just trying, I always like to know the hierarchy, and, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of, we'd like to have your involvement in the town. And TGI Fridays, years back, when I was running the Events Committee, was a very good friend of the town of Stoughton, so thank you for that.
We would love that opportunity.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to have something to say or I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Joe's?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'll entertain a motion. What's the wish?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion as submitted and a second. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Chairman Cave?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you so much.
They're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Thank you. You, too.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchett and Mr. DiNapoli.
I got to ask Mr. DiNapoli, any relation to Pamela?
Yes, Pam's married to my cousin, Tom.
Oh, let's see. I knew, I knew I had, that's a small world.
I knew he was Tommy's brother.
Went to school with Pam.
I ran track with Tommy.
Tommy? What was that?
I ran track with Tom.
Oh, okay. Yeah, he is down in Sandwich now. I see him a lot. He's retired, but Pam's still working.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Hey, if Mr. McCrisky is still in the building, Brian McCrisky, we'd love to talk to you about hosting your first fundraiser. That was very moving, and, you know, we're certainly, we're certainly here and would love to participate, so please reach out.
We will have somebody reach out to you forthwith, sir, but it won't be the first donation because that's already been made.
Okay.
But thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, it was a very proud moment.
Great. Good luck. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I give Tom and Pam all your regards. Bye-bye.
Okay. Okay, hang on, I'm going to open the hearing.
No problem.
A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, August 6, 2024, at 8:00 p.m. to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Canton Street. Relocate 1JO pole, joint pole, on Canton Street, beginning at the point of 200 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Pratt's Court. Relocate pole number 53, Canton Street, project number 27359884. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, 3rd Floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., and are virtually and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for the public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. Can I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Second.
Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Chairman Cave?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the meeting's open, and we'll see what we have for the correspondence. We have a piece from them showing that, what poles had to be located and where. We have a diagram that's been given, a plan that shows where the poles are moving to. From the Fire Department, Assistant Chief Mekomba has approved it. From the, from Chief Donna McNamara has given approval. She has no objections. From Paul Chafum, Department of Public Works, he's approved. Engineering Department, Craig Horstfeld, Assistant Town Engineer, has approved this with no problems. And we have the outstanding, that they put it in the ledger for the charge notice. Okay, Mohammed, you're up.
So this job here is a DOT job. It's the reconstruction of Canton Street and Central Street, and due to this DOT job, National Grid is required to relocate 15 existing poles, replacing five existing poles. Reason for those replacements, which is kind of old age, and installation of three new poles, and the permanent removal of three poles. I could go in depth over every little thing if you guys would like to hear that, but it's just, it looks like they're widening the street and, you know, fixing the street, and that requires us, most of our poles are along the sidewalk or the side of the street, so this is requiring us to kind of move our poles a little bit so that way, you know, DOT can do the job they're asking for.
All righty. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Cave, any questions?
I have no questions. Thanks for joining us again. It's good seeing you.
Mr. Gito, do you have any questions, sir?
No.
Mr. McCrisky? No. Where'd Deborah go? I have no questions. I don't assume Deborah would know neither. I'll open it up to the audience if anybody has any questions in the audience or if somebody's Deborah, you have any questions? No? Good to go. Okay, no questions. I'll entertain a motion then to close the hearing.
So made.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
And Mr. McCrisky?
Oh, yes.
And I vote yes. What's the wish of the Board?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're all set, Mohammed?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
It's all yours now, Steve.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Carrera. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, is to discuss, a discussion of open meeting law complaint received on July 16, 2024, filed by Patrick Higgins and Associates, and response thereto, votes may be taken. So we received a, an opinion by our attorneys, a response. They've drafted a letter for us to respond with, and I'll read the body of the email, and the ask is that the vote, that the Board vote to adopt this as our response for the open meeting law complaint. If anybody has changes they'd like to see made, then you can make that into a motion. So the body of it says, Dear Mr. Higgins, the town of Stoughton Select Board, the Board, has received and reviewed the above captioned open meeting law complaint attached heretofore as Exhibit A, in which you allege as follows regarding the Board's July 3, 2024, meeting. The Board held an illegal executive session for an improper purpose. Quote, "Request for appropriation transfer between or within departments," colon, "from dispatch salary to buyout per personnel agreement." Sick. The 10 exemptions in the open meeting law do not allow budget transfers to be discussed in executive session. The emphasis provided in the letter was in the original document. On August 6, 2024, the Board met and considered your complaint and authorized our office to provide this response. A public body may convene in executive session to, quote, "conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel," or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This is General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, I'm sorry, 21A2, colloquially, I can't say the word, colloquially referred to as purpose to. The relevant executive session agenda item reads in pertinent parts as follows. Executive Session A, Executive Session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for the negotiation with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Manager. Item B, Executive Session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions- to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Clerk. C, Request for appropriation transfer between or within departments, dash, from dispatch salaries to buyout personnel agreement. Here, the quote appropriation transfer, end quote, is crucial and directly related to negotiations with certain non-union town personnel, who was the subject of Executive Session Item B. Disclosing the transfer would make the town's negotiating position and the identity of said town employee public compromising the purpose of the executive session. Hence, it is the Board's position that holding the discussion of appropriation transfer in executive session under Purpose 2 was proper. Notwithstanding the Board's position above, the Board also considers your specific request for relief. As for your requested remedy, that the Board quote, "attend a formal open meeting law webinar without delay," and that it learn and comply with the exemptions that can be used to legally enter an executive session. The Board routinely takes advantage of the resources offered by the DOG to ensure that it is fluent and up to date on the requirements of open meeting law and is happy to continue doing so. We trust that this satisfies your concerns and appreciate your efforts to ensure compliance with the commonwealth open meeting law. Truly yours, and this will be signed by Attorney Alexander M. Castro, Town Counsel. So that is our response, and the question is whether or not we adopt that as our response to authorize that response to send to the Department of Open Government.
Ready for motion?
Motion to accept?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought Mr.
Just a motion to accept it.
I'm gonna make a formal, I am gonna abstain from any of this. You guys take the vote, I'll be here, but I will not say anything.
You got it. So, Ms. Roberts made the motion.
Yes.
To adopt it.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCrisky, and we'll go down the pipe again. Mr. Gito.
I was not in attendance at that meeting, I am going to abstain and I'm not going to speak anymore on this.
Okay, so one abstention, Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera abstains as well, and then Mr.
Aye.
McCrisky. Aye. I vote yes as well. So, three yeses, two abstentions. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have four items. Item A, Approve, Approval of Open Session Minutes Meeting of July 16th, 2024. Item B, Application for License for a Non-Alcoholic Brazilian Feast on August 31st, 2024, at the Immaculate Conception Church, 122 Canton Street. Item C, Approval of Warrant for State Primary. Item D, Electronic Billboard Request for Use Application to Congratulate Stoughton Olympic Medalist Frederick Richards. Is there a motion to approve? Actually, I should ask, has anybody wanted to comment on any of these items?
A.
Okay, we have A.
D.
A, B. Okay, so.
D, next to all.
And D, okay. So, Item A, so rather than just pull, we can just comment on it. Item A, this is for Mr. Carrera.
Yeah, bear with me one second.
Yeah, take your time. Would you like me to move around, come back?
No, no, I'm just gonna peel back to the meeting.
Yeah, no problem.
Matter of fact, I pulled it to the right place. It was on the minutes for the Toffee Social Bar.
Yeah.
I'd like to add in that Ms. Roberts had made like an amendment to it in the motion that the time is 7:00 to 11:00, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And also, we have to put in the fact that the request that was on, her application was Monday to Saturday, and that Sunday's out. There'll be no music, no nothing on those days, they can't because she'll have to come back to the Board either when she renews it or if she wants to amend it between now and then, she'll have to come back and amend that. So that was all part of the motion when we did it, and it wasn't reflected in the minutes. So I'd like that put in so that it doesn't leave our desk and become cut blanche.
Fair enough. Joe, did you feel like you captured that or do you need a copy of it? Oh, perfect. Okay, so that is a, so we will actually pull Item A so that we can, we can. We're pulling Item A since we're making a change to it.
Yeah.
And so the request is, I mean, I'm going to take what you've said as a motion to make those changes.
I write stuff down when I'm running.
You're very organized about that, and I appreciate it. So is there a second to make that change?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so seconded by Mr. McCrisky. And then, so all in favor of, actually, I should say, there's a motion to accept with those amendments. We've got a second from Mr. McCrisky, so this is a motion to accept Item A, Approval of the Open Session Minutes from July 16th with those amendments. Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera.
Yes.
And Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So Item A is complete. Now we have, Mr. McCrisky wanted to make a comment on Item B. Let me know if you need, would prefer to pull it, if there's something you want to change.
And bear with me a minute, bring that back up. Because the way our document sets up, when you're looking for something, you go three quarters of the way into it. The, yes, that billboard, who has the contact of that person?
Oh, is this for D, Item D, Delta?
Yeah, for the billboard.
Yeah, sorry, so we guys.
That has been, that's a commitment when that sign went up, that X amount of time be dedicated to the town. And I'd like to know who that person is that owns the sign? And that person's telephone number? Because it, it's elusive. I don't know who that person is that controls that? And is the town's time be utilized? You know, the quantity of time we're allowed and when that was put in, the commitment that was made to the town? Who's monitoring that? Who knows who to call?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's being overseen by Pam McCarthy, but we'll run through.
Okay, well, that doesn't belong with an employee. That belongs with, somewhere in the archives of our records as the licensing agency.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd like to have that sooner or later.
Yeah, so Trish, you mind just pulling that together so we know the details of that? Okay.
Thanks.
And.
Can I speak?
Of course.
If I just mention, Pam McCarthy actually has a system in place that we have, that users have to request the use of the billboard in a form, and we'll get you all that information that you would like, Mr. McCrisky. It's the first time I had ever seen it, but I was pretty impressed, and I can give you a copy of this. Is that okay? Any other questions while I have the mic and?
No.
Okay, but I will note that, Mr. McCrisky.
I do agree with you, Ms. Shapshia, that Tom brought it to us, how it was gonna be laid out and there was a form, and I know Pam was gonna handle it. They showed us the form, I forget where I have it, but I.
I'll make you a copy of this, it's phenomenal, actually. Okay, and I'll get to that too.
Perfect. Ms. Roberts.
One thing is that I wanted to remind the Board that we wrote the policy, which includes the form that Trish just showed us. So, and we agree that, that the design that goes on that electronic billboard has to come before the Select Board each and every time. And it is to approve the design. And the next piece, Mr. McCrisky asked, who's the owner of that electronic sign? And are we fully optimizing our contract for the use? Well, Trish would have a copy of that, the contact of the owner of the billboard itself, and so would Pam McCarthy. And so that was the one thing.
The application came before us and was approved by the owner, and I just want the person's name and.
Sounds good. The, thank you. The reason I wanted to pull Item 10D was just to correct the misspelling of Frederick Richard's name. It's without an S, so it's Frederick Richard. And that's the only reason I pulled it.
I appreciate that. So that is, that error is made, I'm trying to, is it, is it on the?
Yes.
I know it's maybe wrong on our agenda.
And on number 12.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So, Trish, if you don't mind, taking that away as well.
And just to, just to add, I don't believe a copy of the design was included in the package, but it's the same banner that we have in the Town of Stoughton. Oh, she's showing it now. Yeah, there it is. That's the design.
I love the use of colors.
I do, I love it.
Excellent, so we have, uh, so I will now entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items B, C, and D. D with the change of the. Oh, sorry, Mr. Gito, I apologize, sir.
I mistakenly thought that Item B had been pulled for discussion. I would just like to say a word or two about that.
This is Item B as in Bravo or D as in Delta?
B as in Brazil Festival.
Okay.
The increase in the number of people there, as noted by the Police Department, is from somewhere around 500 or something to 3,500. And that's all going to occur between 7:00 PM and 1:00 AM, very near the intersection of School Street and Canton Street. And the Police Department has indicated that where last year they didn't think that there was a need for police detail, they are now asking that two people be there. I could not agree with that more. 3,500 people in that area over a five or six hour period. That is like having the Thanksgiving football game all assembling in that area. I, I'm having a hard time imagining that, but I guess I'll leave that to the Police Department to figure out how that's all going to be handled. But I did want to raise that issue because it's a huge change.
Thank you. So we will, I'll entertain a motion to accept Agenda Items B, C, and D. D with the caveat that we just changed Mr. Richard, I can't say Richard's name. So, yeah, Frederick Richard, change his name to reflect that there's no S at the end of Richard.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items as submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
As submitted, we changed the last name.
Yes, as they were submitted to us.
As amended.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the final comments.
So if we approve it, we approve with the recommendation by the chief for the two details?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I said, when I say as submitted, we all had a discussion and we voted on it, so that's what was submitted to the Board.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second, okay. Motion by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Ms. Roberts. Mr. Gito, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The next item, I know business is still here, so she can always answer any questions if people do have any. But this is the warrants that we sign weekly to pay bills and whatnot. We, Master of Law allows us to authorize a single signer to represent the Board. I've been doing it since I started on the Board, so I've been doing it for about seven years. Happy to continue, but if somebody would prefer it moved into other hands, either.
I agree with you being the chairman to do it. If you have a problem, I being the vice chairman, I'll step in and sign if you can't.
Perfect, I'm comfortable with that. So, so that we, I think we can't have two people who are authorized to sign it. Does anybody else want to do it?
Just a question on that.
Yeah.
When was that vote first taken that it became one signer? Because now I'm going back to the old days and.
I think it was during COVID, Joe.
Was it?
Yeah, because you couldn't get together and name.
Okay.
Because it used to be three to okay everything.
It's been going on since, actually, we can answer that, since we had somebody, we know somebody who hasn't answered that.
It's not as important as, what my concern has been is that we sign, the Select Board signs the warrants to release payment. If somebody were to make a call to me and say, hey, you may want to check this expense, it's questionable. How can I review that before it's signed by, in this case, the Chair? We used to have it, it was mandatory for three signatures on the warrant. So I would come in with my colleagues or when I was Chair, I went through the warrants. I used to go through line item by line item and read those. And I questioned a lot of line items, trust me, especially when uniform allowances came out. Found things that weren't considered part of a uniform, a coat handbag, a coat, period coat, shoes, right? So we're missing that opportunity right now.
The Municipal Modernization Act of 2016 is what allows for signatories from offices, from boards and committees. And the reason that the state put this into play is because municipalities were finding that they did not have the quorum votes or the quorum signatures in order to approve a warrant. So sometimes two people are on vacation, three people are on vacation. The business of the town was stopping and we could not issue the warrants. Now, there is currently, if the warrants are emailed out, the invoices are not emailed out, but the warrants are themselves. So if any member of the Board had a question on an invoice, you notify us that you have a question on that and we hold that payment. We technically could cut the check, however, we do not release the check. So there are safeguards and I do understand the comment on the coat bag because my previous employment saw him buy a fur coat. So the accountant's job is to review every single invoice and have a good understanding of what's allowable and not allowable by law.
So the email that you send out, because this is the first time I've really talked about it, those warrants, how far in advance is that of the signature? Because I see the warrants go out and say, warrants ready for signatures. And I know that's saying to the Chair or whoever, come on in and sign them. How far ahead are those? If I wanted to look at it, and I only do it for specific reasons, I don't, you know, I like to look at them once in a while, but between me getting that email and the Chair signing them, and now it's a done deal, it's signed, how much time do I have in between that?
The signatures are not released and the checks are not released until the Thursday. Thursday for the town side and Friday for the school side.
Okay, but when you send out that email though, that is on when?
As soon as we get the warrants done. We are getting back on track of getting warrants done in a timely fashion. They were behind for quite some time, effective today. I'm not sure what time that email may have gone out. I believe Mary Jane may have sent it out earlier today. So the warrants are in process, they were in for signature today. And if you want to look at a warrant at any time between now and Thursday, we can hold whatever payment you are requesting.
You answered my question, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah. Because it's just, when you're not needed to look at them all the time, sometimes it's very easy to say, I'll get to it, and you don't. So I just was curious, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carrera.
Just because the state says you can use one person, this Board does not. Just because the state says you can use one person, this board does not have to abide by that. If this board took a vote and said, we want to remain with the three, that's the way it would be.
Absolutely. That's why you have that form in front of you.
And I think it's going to stay with this. We are not going to give, I am not going to give my signature powers to any employee in this building.
Oh, it's not to an employee in the building.
Well, it said a designee. It says it could be a designee.
No, the designee would have to be strictly within the board. You could not designate the town manager to sign on behalf.
I know, but it didn't say that, but I, that's why I was going to question it.
Hmm.
In my eyes, you can have more than one signature. It doesn't have to be, but I think it should rely with the chairman and the vice chairman.
That's up to the prerogative of the board.
God forbid Steve goes away on a vacation and his airplane doesn't come back.
Oh, that wasn't very nice, I'm sorry.
There's been times.
Oh, everybody's getting stuck in airports now and they can't fly, so that's what I mean, not crap.
Last year I was on a cruise and there's nothing anybody could do, but.
But if the chair of the board is authorized, you are the vice chair. If the chair of the board wasn't available, you would automatically be that person stepping as the chair.
Well, I just want that to be.
Well, that's, that's the hierarchy of the board. If the chair is not available to sign something, you are the vice chair.
Yeah.
That's just.
One.
Sometimes people go, hey, can you sign this, Joe? You're here.
Yeah.
You know?
As an anecdote, and this is just to give you, some of this stuff is, you know, you're buying equipment, you know, there's payroll involved and stuff like that, but as an anecdote of how this having, making sure that there's at least one person that can do it, and if you, you know, the consequences of requiring a quorum but not having one, is we also sign the check for veterans. They are as individuals typically very, you know, the schedules are very regular, they're expecting their check on a certain day.
Be late on that one, I dare you.
They, yeah, they're very dependent on that. And, and there are times when, when it's a quick turnaround to get those out. So, you know, just as a personal anecdote, it doesn't have to be me, anybody, whoever wants to do it can do it, but I, but I want to make sure that, that, that we never miss one of those checks. And so far, we've been pretty good about it.
It's responsible the other one.
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
I agree. I want to make sure we never miss those, one of those checks as well. But what I'm actually commenting on, there should be some consistency. So whoever volunteers to take the lead on signing the warrants, then we expect them to be there to sign it, right? If you did not want to, no longer take the lead on that, you could delegate that to your vice chair, but he already volunteered to do it, so, but you've been doing it for a couple of years, but that.
I'm not looking to take it away from you, believe me. I'm looking to help you.
So as long as there's that consistency of the person that's volunteering to do it and they do it, because we're going to have, we're oversight as well because we get the emails every two weeks, every payroll week. So if you don't, if you think you want to delegate it to Vice Chair Carrera, then I would be all in favor for that. And then we just need to get a second person as the alternate in case he cannot do it.
Yeah, you know, and actually, I've sort of been thinking about this. One, I've always done it because it's, it's really just, you know.
I want you to do it.
It's an extra burden, but you know, I was sort of trying, trying to lift the burden off of people, but to be honest, from, from like an accounting standpoint, it probably would be wise to switch it up, up every, every couple of years, just to make sure that, that we have a different set of eyes.
I agree with that piece.
So, you know, just in the, in the event.
Make a motion, we appoint the vice chair to be the authorized signatory.
Second.
Okay.
See, you should have shut up.
You've gone too far now.
I know, I know. I'm just teasing you.
Yeah, so.
It's a motion on the table.
So you can vote that, Ms. Carrera?
Second.
I'm not going to take it because I, there's no way I'm going to be in here to do that.
Okay.
I'm lucky, I was going to ask tonight, let me put this on the big channel. I was going to ask tonight that if I could have a little leeway between now and say the first of November, that we could move the meetings to 7:30, because I'm croaking and I can't be leaving the job the way I'm leaving it. I got a lot of, the, the weather hasn't been conducive, it's raining and we just went through 90s and 108 temperatures. I would just, I'm appealing that we did it for a short time and if we have to go back to it in the winter when things start slowing down again, I can handle that, but I'm leaving the job early and it, and it's, it's not fair.
That's, well, that's something we can, we can happily do. I don't see a problem with it.
On the motion.
If you keep signing, if you couldn't make it, you just call me and I will.
I rescind my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Trish?
Can I make, can I make a comment? I just wanted to make one little point here. Somebody had mentioned something about a coat bag and something that had gone through, slipped through.
It didn't happen here. It didn't happen here.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows we have an approval.
Was it me?
Right.
Listen, I wouldn't mind a coat bag, but I want you to know that we do have an approval process here and we do have policies set in place for reimbursement. So we have a bunch of different eyes that look at the reimbursements that go through the system, so that would not happen here. I just wanted to make that comment.
And Munis has made that a lot of, a lot more streamlined.
A tan coat bag, sounds good.
You're getting the lower end stuff, no?
I'm getting punchy. I think we should, I think we've also maybe overcomplicated this task.
So what's the conclusion of this discussion?
Somebody who could come by, I'm happy to do it again. We can get two, I think we can have two people authorized.
What I would recommend is that you have a primary signer and a secondary signer so that if the primary is not available, the secondary can step in.
Okay, so we'll volunteer for it if nobody else wants it. So the, I'd be the primary and Mr. Carrera would be the secondary. Unless people want to shift it to some, if you'd like to have me pop off and you can hop on, I'm fine with that, too.
You can be three, you can be four.
Let's do, let's do four because payroll, every two weeks comes around so quickly. So I recommend that our chairman is the primary, then the second, the secondary person, if you're not available, would be the vice chair, and then between Gito, McCrisky, and I, because an email will go out from Gilda that says, we need to have this signed. So whoever makes it first if KV and Carrera are unavailable.
If you can number the form, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then we know 1's done, 2's done, we go to 3, 4, 5. Then there'll be an audit trail of who, who we've actually assigned for the signatory. It will make it a little bit easier for us. Thank you.
Okay, so who wants to be the, I think the word is tertiary?
I'll be.
Roberts. So number one, KV, two, Carrera, three, Roberts. Okay, so is there a motion for that?
Second.
Okay, perfect. We have a, motions made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, Mr. Gito? Oh, we've lost him. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And that, oh, no, I was about to say at the end, we have one more, we have one more item. Apologies, Ms. Roberts. This is the last item on our agenda, is to consider and discuss event proposal in recognition of Olympic medalist Frederick Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair Carrera, Mr. McCrisky, Mr. Gito. I want to just talk a little bit about the event that we're proposing and get your okay, to get your authorization to give the key to the city to Frederick Richard. We have a date identified. When I think about all of us, we have heart, we have love, we have skill, we have dedication, and we have commitment, and so does Fred Richard. Giving a key to the city from each of us individually could mean Mr. McCrisky allows Fred Richard to ride in the antique fire truck, or make a medallion that has the town of Stoughton embossed on it, and then we hand that to him. Or it could be having a parade for him in the town of Stoughton. It could be, it take many different processes to give someone a key to the city, right? This event is going to be a low cost but high visibility. Emphasis on low cost. The way I, a group of us are designing it, and I, from the family to his agent, and this is the write-up you see in the package, we've identified the date as being Sunday, October 6th, and that's because Fred Richard will already be in the town because there is an event that the sports, the athletes will attend at TD Garden. So it will start out a couple of hours in the town of Stoughton. We will kick it off, the recognition. We would like to end or have the program at the high school, the Stoughton High School, which has already been approved by Dr. Joe Biata and, and chair, chairperson Catherine Wise, but she has to go through her, her vetting process, too, to get it approved by the school committee. So we are on stage giving this key to the city. Along with that, there are others in the community that want to participate and, because he, he represents the region. So there's Randolph, there's Canton, there's Sharon, you know, other committees, and so they would possibly have a vendor table at the, at the Stoughton High School. And so that would be representative of Fred Richard's going to each town and taking a picture and, and things like that. Also, we would like to have an educational scholarship in the name of Fred Richard. So Dr. Biata and approved, and Dr. Ada and Catherine tentatively approved, they want to see the final product, but they will draft that scholarship and they will manage it like they manage other scholarships, sports scholarships, education scholarship for students in the public school system, students that are in the town of Stoughton. But what I'm asking you today is to approve giving Fred Richard a key to the city, and that would take on a, you know, it'll be formalized because you would be the ones, each of you would be the one giving him a key, and the key can be defined later.
Comment?
Yes.
I'm okay, but you have to change a medallion or, a this or, to a medallion and this and this and that.
Okay.
Because, and number one, a key to the town, not a city. So we got to make sure we give a key to the town.
Give the key to the town.
You don't get an Olympic medal winner.
Yes.
In a town as our size often.
True.
This is, to my knowledge, our first. And you mark first with celebrations. So I'm open, as I've said to you before, there's a lot of things we can do. And this young man now stands as an example for any Stoughton High School kid, elementary school, that you can do whatever you want to do if you just set your mind to it and stay focused on it. So we only make, have one opportunity to send messages like these, and that's what I think this needs to be, because to your point is that he serves as an example of follow-through tenacity. You can get what you want, and that message just doesn't resonate in Stoughton. It resonates everywhere. It resonates in Brockton. They've got a great program over there. Some of their sports programs are off the chain, you know, and, you know, it's going to serve as an example for them. You know, Stoughton will be the highlight of what's possible, you know, when you stick to your guns. We've got people that have gone on to Stoughton and do some great things and gone down in history, you know, Hollywood actors. We had the inventor of the iron lung, the baby bird, Dr. Forrest Byrd, born and raised in Stoughton. You know, we've had some people do great things, and it's nice to see a younger generation stepping up to that plate and being marked, you know, as a part of Stoughton's history at such a young age. So this is a great thing, Deborah. As I've said to you, I'll do whatever I can, you know, there's a lot of things we can do.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I, I would like to say that, that, you know, I'm only really going to be repeating Joe's remarks, which I think were perfect, that this is really is an extraordinary achievement, you know, by one of our, one of our neighbors, one of our, you know, and it's just, it's remarkable to see, you know. I'm, I'm just delighted for him, very, you know, very proud to, to have him come from our community, and I want to see him honored, and I, I think, I hadn't really thought about it in those terms, but yeah, you only get, you only get to do it once, one time, you know, first time, one time.
Unless we have some other great athlete out there that's going to be the next one, right?
Yeah, an Olympic loser or something, but I think, I, this is really extraordinary and, you know, just I'm very excited about it and, and, you know, it's been wonderful seeing the entire community coalesce around, around him and, and to cheer him on. All the, all the things you've, you've mentioned, I am, I'm very much in favor of. I appreciate all the work you've put into it and continue to. So you have my, you have my complete support in this. I think the only change is just one that I would ask, where it really just key to the town, I want to make sure people feel like, you know, that we're not trying to turn this into a city. Every now and then I hear the rhetoric.
I didn't dare comment.
But, but I, but, you know, we, we are a very welcoming community and, and we are very, very proud of, of each other and our achievements, and I want to be able to honor that appropriately. So thank you very much. You have my vote. Yeah, we'll, we'll do it, but I think if people don't mind, I just, I would like to hear from Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Perhaps this is on the list of things you're going to do, but it's almost no cost to have a proclamation and make October 6th Fred Richard Day, along with whatever key you come up with. The nearest parade of significance would be the Parade of Lights if he could come back in December. Or the Fourth of July Parade next year, he could be the grand marshal and get him a nice convertible and stick him in the front. I certainly, as a member of the 300th Committee, if we're going to honor Stoughton history, it would be awful nice to have him in that parade, which will be the Fourth of July Parade for 2026. He's already said he's heading for 2028 Olympics, so we could probably hit him a couple more times after that. But I don't think it would cost too much for the proclamation, and if he could come back for either of those parades, I'm sure some car dealer would be willing to donate a convertible for him to sit in, as long as it had their name on it somewhere, and if he was available. Because I know that people are concerned about, are concerned about cost, and I think those are fairly low-cost items.
Thank you very much for your comments. We'll, and I apologize, I am just a little bit tired, but could you just help me articulate what exactly it is that we're voting on? I would like very much to make that motion, though.
You're voting on, I would like a motion, that each of us will recognize him in our own special way at this event on October 6th, a key to the town. I use the term key to the city because that's just a phrase. That's a well-known phrase, but we. but we know we mean the key to Stoughton, and that takes different meaning based on who we are as individuals, as a select board, an elected official. You know, we have heart, we have love, we have skills, we have dedication, we have commitment. So if you wanted to offer something that, what really resonates with you individually, because we're going to be on the stage twice. Once, at the high school, when we have the program of recognition, and then next, we were invited to the event at TD Garden, and at that time, offer, reoffer him the key to the town of Stoughton, and mention his education scholarship fund in the name of Frederick Richard. So we just want to be present for that.
So that's the vote that you, you accept that.
Absolutely.
This is the mission. The mission impossible.
So the motion, and please correct people who are wrong, the motion is that we commit to each individually honoring Frederick Richards with, I'll just leave it sort of at that in our own unique way, during the October 16th, 6th event.
It's on the...
Okay, so I make that motion.
You need a second, right?
Yeah, seconded by Mr. Carrera. So we'll start, Mr. Gito is no longer with us. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Yes, I vote yes as well, and I was, I've got to be honest, I almost forgot all of your names, that's how tired I am.
We're tired.
So I apologize if I stuttered there for a second. So I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Have a wonderful night, it is 9:46. Be well.